Waiting for me? Okay, you're... All right. All right, the time is 6:00 PM. We are here for our annual budget, annual budget hearing and annual budget meeting. This is an open meeting. Roll call. John?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Brittany?
Here.
Here, and myself, Keith, here. All right. We will start out with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Move your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Announcements, okay. Let's see, budget hearing and some announcements. Board of Education members and terms. Board of Education members in direction of our elected for April. Okay, Keith Nordskog, my term will be up this year. Ends at the end of March of 2025. Brad's ends at the 2027. Brittany, you just started, you will be having to rerun again in 2025. So take out your election papers in November. Linda has them for you, waiting. Ben Kidder, 2026. And John Schwamber, also 2026. All right, each speaker addresses, the chairperson should state their name and address for the record. Participants in voting in, restricted to district residents. Voting procedure, regular board meeting immediately following the annual, annual meeting to adopt the 2425 tax levy and budget. Establish the date of the next annual meeting, which will be October 27th of 2025. Okay. All right, that brings us on to the presentation or proposed budget. All right.
So I have that attached, I also have copies for members of the audience to follow along. What we've got here in the packet, a lot of information to review through. Page six is a copy of our agenda. Page seven is the minutes from our 2023 annual meeting and budget hearing. But then we can start on page nine, which is our, it is our treasurer's annual financial report for the 2324 school year, just so we can wrap up where we finished in June. So with the treasurer's report on page nine, taking a look at cash balance at the beginning of the school year, which was $2,591,072.48. Cash balance at June of 30, June 30 of '24, $2,891,445.76. So, so we did well as far as growing that fund balance. We just have a breakdown as of June 30th with our activity accounts, our regular account, cash on hand, and the local government pool, as well as CDs. That's where it comes out to that, $2,891,445.76.
And that represents our fund balance?
That is correct.
Yes.
That is the fund balance.
Uh, no.
Our correct? It's close, sorry about that.
That is just, that's what we had in cash on,
June.
Basically cash on hand that we actually had physically in our, in our accounts.
Right. I apologize. Yes, page 10 will actually get into fund balance.
Okay.
Where we're sitting. Sorry about that, yes.
So that's before we got our last taxes and,
Right.
Some other payables, we're all doing things like that.
All right. So page 10 is just gonna highlight a couple things here with our fund balance, that's what you're asking for. Going from the 2324 school year to the 2425, we're not expecting a growth in our fund balance. Because technically, right now, can you remind me the percentage we're at fund balance wise versus operational?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one percent. So fifty, our fund balance is currently at fifty-one percent of our annual operating budget, which actually is more than extremely healthy. Typically, what the aim point is, is right around forty percent. So we've done a good job with that, but then also, as we've been talking about, and the fact that in order to grow your fund balance, your money's coming in, has to be greater than what your expenses are for the year. And with our proposed budget, we are, we are now at a balanced budget looking at this year. So we're now looking at growing it, A, because it just gets into a little more tenuous the more actual funds we have on hand for our fund balance, but then also the fact that our expenditures are now at that point where it's matching up with our funds coming in, so.
So we don't have to dip into it though either?
We do not, we do not. If, if we were to have something big occur that we did not budget, yes, we would have to take a look at that, so. But, but the caution with that is, as we look at inflation and other things coming up and continuing to increase, we will approach that where our funds coming in from state and local taxes and, and from general aid are, it will not match up with the expenditures that we will have, so. Anyway, so moving on, a highlight here on page 10, towards the bottom, it talks about state sources. One thing to keep in mind, and we'll see why we've got our state aid, our general state aid is actually decreasing. You take a look at two years ago, 2223, it was $1,843,281. And it's been a steady decrease in large part because, not, not only because of enrollment, but also because our property valuation has increased in the double digits over the past couple of years. So, and we'll take a look at that a little bit further down the road. Okay? Page 11, just hitting it, that I know that some of the, the support and expenditures see an increase or projecting an increase for this year when we're talking about business administration, but it's talking about transportation and facilities. I know, just a reminder that last year, we made, our board made a decision to tackle the, the RUP project and split it over two years, which was a pretty hefty price tag. But then we also have other expenditures such as bathroom maintenance and transportation maintenance, et cetera. So we're just projecting that increase there.
Okay. Item 220, instructional staff services.
Check.
Hundred and, I can't, can't do that math that fast, but.
Right. That, no, that was something that we highlighted, and that's, I know that Leanne and I had chatted about that too. You just kind of get a quick. Yeah, I know.
Some of that is the grant, one of the grants that we have to use.
Right. Because, because that's the thing, we, we have grants coming in, it still has to be put in our ledger, so it looks like we were spending a bunch of money, but it's.
Our CLC grant.
Right.
The rest of our charter grant, we still have some of the Esser to finish up. So that's a lot of what that is.
Check. So, yeah, thank you for, for that. Okay? So getting into it, we'll continue on with our page 12. It's into Fund 27 balances, and I think we're sitting fairly healthy there. The only thing that would be very nice is if we saw a greater reimbursement rate for our special education services, because right now, we are receiving a thirty-four percent reimbursement for our special education services. And we'll talk more about that later on as far as projections into the future. Okay? I'll try not to speed along too much here. So Fund 27 now goes all the way through into page 13. Debt services, that's 38, and funds 38 and 39 on page 13. We do not have any debt service funds there, which is a good thing. With capital project funds, that's at the bottom of page 13, we do not have, we have not been putting funds into those project funds. So, the next caveat is on page 14, when we're talking about Fund 50 and then Fund 80. Fund 50 is our food service, and I'll let Leanne just kind of touch base on that one just a little bit, so.
That's just basically our, anything, our food increases in, in the budget for that, and staffing, our, having some of our, our summer school food going through there that we, we implemented in the program. So that bumps that up a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, we, it was.
We didn't, sorry, we had a, we also had a fund balance, where we never used to have a fund balance, with the extra money that we were getting for reimbursements. Our fund balance had increased or had a fund balance for Fund 50, so we were using that towards our expenses. And this year, we won't have that, so we'll be transferring money out of Fund 10, probably to help cover the food service costs.
Right. So. And then the last one, Fund 80. Fund 80, what that covers is like your daycare and then other community-based programming.
Our after-school program. During the, during the school year, the after-school program goes through Fund 80. The summer school, for some reason, has to go through Fund 10.
Right. And that's, once again, that's community-based services, so.
And our middle school sports, sorry.
Anything else?
Yeah, I think that was.
Okay, just checking, all right.
Those little things that keep popping.
Check. Part, part of it with, with the Fund 80, we had, we did have a fund balance previously, and we're just trying to add a little more into that, just so we are able to cover things here a little better, so.
Yeah, but daycare has, daycare has a few more costs, increase the percentage that we pay for the company that handles the payroll for the daycare. We had an increase in the pay for them, and then they also increased the percentage of, that we paid them on top of that, which still puts us ahead of having everything fully under our own budget. But those increase the costs, and we're looking at increasing what we charge to families, but that wasn't even close enough to cover the additional costs that we have for the daycare.
Right. So how, why do we have separate payroll system, a company that handles payroll for daycare?
The, the reason behind that was because if, if we handled them through the school payroll, we had to offer all of the same benefits that we offer to our current staff, which are health, dental, and all of those things. And so that could increase our costs substantially. So to have this outside entity handle that, they can get insurance through them, but it's a little different than what we have. We don't have that, that cost.
So, so it's almost like a temp service, so like, you're talking about the insurance, but then also the retirement piece, it wouldn't fall under WRS as we would have as well, so.
Do we know if what we paid them offsets what we would do if they were?
Very much.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Okay. Anything else on the proposed budget? I know that pages 15, 16, and 17, those are audits, are forms from our audit. Clifton Larson, yeah.
Clifton Larson Allen.
Allen, thank you, I was missing the last one there. Clifton Larson Allen has been our auditor for years and, and produces this annually, so. Just making sure that we have been responsible in spending our funds as we said we have, so. So then getting into page 18 and 19, it's just breaking it down in, in more of a summary format as far as our revenue and expenditures. And when I say revenue, that's money's coming into the district and then our overall expenditures. So it's kind of a recap in some sense. And then I know, or actually number, our page 20 does have that. Last one, it's talking about proposed tax levy, and then we'll get into that here soon, so.
Yes. Anything? Anything else?
If, if anything, I just want to continue on. I, I do have a little more information as far as graphics, starting on page 22, where it starts taking a look at our FTE enrollment, so it's our students based on our Third Friday count in September. We just had a little bit of an offset this year so far, taking a look at our previous years. We've had continuous growth. We're still on, on the positive side when it comes to open enrollment, so more coming in than going out. But movement of, of a few, a couple families here, and also just some movement of, of people, period, has dropped us down to that 307. And since, since September, I think we've had, what, 12 or 13 kids move in to the districts, where unfortunately, all of our funding comes from that Third Friday count, so that's, that's kind of a stinker there, so. Anyway, but this is kind of what, what I was anticipating, looking at other surrounding districts is that, that growth pattern is not going to continue, and it's going to level off in some sense, just based off on birth rates and whatnot, so just know that that's kind of projection where, where I'm seeing this is, we're gonna hit that.
Do we try to project it like the 2025, or did we just wait till we get the harder numbers?
We, we can try, but it's, it's very difficult based on, on movement. I mean, the best we can do is try to get, you know, our, our birth rate numbers and try to see where that spreads out, but with increased, with increased open enrollment, increased homeschooling, it's, it's hard to really get a good gauge as to where we would sit.
So you think that 321 from last year was kind of a peak, and now we're?
I, I, I think, I think it was a slight peak, but I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic in the fact that I, I think we're gonna maintain some good numbers here. Just, I, I just don't see us increasing.
From the current 307?
Not, not, not a tremendous amount, no, so.
Okay.
Anywho. When it comes to the next graph, what it's talking about there is taking a look at our revenue limit per member of, so it's per student. One thing to, to take a look at, it's taking a look at the state averages, which is that green, and then the blue is, is the district. And you notice that we bumped up in 2016 when we had that referendum passed here, so we had a little more money coming in for each student, but now due to increased expenditures and overhead, that gap has closed, so. And that's kind of what I was projecting as well with our, our balanced budget. We're, we're at that point now, where the funds coming in equals out what, what the state average is and, and. Yeah.
Is the state average what other distri, I mean, the average of other districts?
That's correct.
So they've just caught up, I mean?
That, that's it.
Yeah. Okay. It doesn't really, it's not a funding graph or anything?
No.
Yeah.
No. It, it's just highlighting the fact that, that the referendum that was passed in 2016 did what it was supposed to.
Yeah.
And it increased our, our, our overall fund balance, but that was only gonna go so far, so. Okay. On page 23, just a quick reference as far as mil rate compared to other districts in the neighborhood and of comparable size. So we're fitting pretty close to the middle of the pack when it comes to mil rate. So mil rate is that dollars per hundred thousand of valuation. Okay? And then the last item on 23 was the official 2024 equalization aid. So it's talking about the property values in our district. And what I will highlight, if you go to the far right, and you'll see a percentage there, it was a 14.6% increase in property valuation in the district. And last year, it was over 22%, so we've seen a pretty healthy increase in our, in our actual property valuation here.
And then, and then the tax paid on pro, I mean, that's tied to that.
That's correct.
If it goes up, say the town is 16.9, there should be 16.9% more revenue. Or, or, well, or it's not exact number, but it should be an increase in revenue to the district if the property valuation went up. Or am I reading that wrong?
No, it, it, it isn't. Where, where it has an impact is your mil rate, or what we're able to levy doesn't really change much based on, on our enrollment and, and just the district itself. Where you'll see that impact is your mil rate decreasing. So while we're able to charge per hundred thousand, so. Right? So, yes, I mean, it, it's gonna have an impact on, on the district, but it doesn't mean that we're getting more funds, so. Okay. So going on, on the page 24, just some points that we want to touch on here. So taking a look at total compensation increase that we had this past year was a 3% increase in staff wages. And I know the CPI was right around that 3.8% when we made that determination. Some increases, we did look at a 5% increase with our health insurance premium to make sure we had a balance in our, in our insurance pool, so making sure that we were able to cover things there. No increases when it comes to dental insurance. Slight increase with our WRS increase, and that's tied to our wages and whatnot, so anytime our wages go up, our WRS contributions increase as well. And then retiree insurance, any, any real changes there, Leanne, that you're seeing?
I think that kind of broke, rolled out. I mean, that was, that was hard to tell too, because we had filled vacant positions.
Right.
Which, you know, increased probably overall.
So. All right, getting into the next thing here, so major teaching year program reductions, additions. One thing that we're not paying for right now is a position, because just to bring you back, in July, made a decision to reallocate a children's house teacher position that was going to be allocated to the middle school, high school. That is unfilled because we have to make some determinations as to what kind of programming we want. So that right now, with our current budget, we're not taking into account that position. And then, you know, once again, no additions this year with the middle school, high school, but making sure that we determine what programming area we're going to add back into the district. So, otherwise, it's pretty straightforward where we're at. Okay? The rest of 24 and 25, it just gets into explanations. That's some light reading for later on, if you want to get into that more, so. And then some wonderful graphics on page 26, 27, and 28. So this is information in a worksheet that's put out by Wisconsin DPI. We're able to plug in numbers, which helps us determine what our mil rate is or levy rate at the bottom of page 27. And when it talks about levy rate, it, it's 0.006048. So if you multiply that by a thousand, that's where you get your mil rate, of 6.05. If that makes sense? Okay, perfect. And that's just plugging in all the numbers that we went through with our proposed budget. Okay? And then, energy efficiency exemption, we did not have anything this year for that. And then page 30 is tax levy summary that we would be looking at here.
Not at all?
That is it.
Okay. All right. All right, this brings us to the election of a chairperson, which is somebody from the audience.
It has to be someone from our district.
From our district?
Yes.
So we'd be starting our annual meeting and establishing meeting officers. And at this point in time, it would be, we would be looking for nominations of a chairperson for this meeting.
Generally, we choose somebody from the audience. My idea is read something.
Thanks for volunteering.
I'm going to have to read something.
I don't know if he can, I don't, I was gonna say Mr. Olber, but.
This is Charlotte Sandborn, our band teacher's husband.
Oh, okay.
So he is definitely in the district.
I can read English, so.
Sure. Okay, good.
Too bad it's in Latin.
All right.
If you want to come up to the.
Come up to the front.
Oh, okay.
You have it.
District clerk?
Sorry, I'm unfamiliar with responsibilities in this new role.
No, it's, it's all good. I'm glad you came. I hope this doesn't deter you from coming again.
Not at all. It's a hell of a meeting.
Isn't that drawing a blank, what is your first name?
Bob.
Bob. Sandy. So we made a nomination. Do we have a second on the nomination?
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the public can vote on that?
Aye.
Aye.
You agree to, okay.
I agree.
Good, all right. All right, district clerk for annual meeting, we have that. All right, approval.
So what you have is the, if you go back to your packet again on page, is it seven, I believe? We have the minutes from the past meeting?
Yep.
So move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And once again, the public can.
Okay. I think I know this by heart after all these years.
It's hard. So then, Bob, if you want to go where it says new business, do you have a budget hearing, annual meeting in there?
Am I looking at item four here on page seven, new, new business?
So we would be going into first, the treasurer's report? We've got, we've got a chairperson, we need the clerk. We need an election of a clerk, since we do not have an official clerk present.
So nominate Brittany, who are right?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, you're a dean. You're third in command now.
That's just for the annual.
That's just for the annual.
Where's the treasurer's report? Is that in the packet?
Actually, we don't have a treasurer's report. So now we go down to the new business approval of the last year's meeting minutes.
So am I supposed to be calling out these items, or should I be more?
Yes, please.
So more in charge than the spectators? Sorry. All right, so our next item of business is approval of the 2022 annual meeting minutes?
Or 2023, sorry.
Excuse me.
That's, that's right.
Now they say 2023, two, they should say 2023. Were you looking at the minutes or were you looking at the agenda?
I'm looking at the.
So we go under number three, yeah.
Oh, I see, all right. Okay. So old business is approval of 2023 annual meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I know that we approved the minutes, from the 2023 annual meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried.
Okay.
All right, moving on to new business. First item is to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax levy.
I make a motion to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, John and Ben, all in favor? Sorry, I'm stepping over my bones here, I gotta keep my motion.
Point of clarification for the group here, at any point, does the chairperson open any of these items for discussion? Or is it just a motion and then carrying?
So according to Robert's rules, yes, after a pa- after a motion and a second, technically it opens up to discussion if there are any discussion points before we move on to actual vote.
So just to keep it by the book, any, any comments to the pertaining to the motion and the second to adopt the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax levy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. All right, item B, school board member's salary.
So on, on that sheet, I, we had last year's, and we just want to take a look at last year's schedule. We can make that determination. And any changes that we want.
And that's in the minutes from twenty twenty-three?
No, I, I have it for.
Oh, okay.
Okay, all right, so these are the actual points. Okay, so a motion to approve would be to acknowledge the following, that the Board of Education members' salaries are one thousand four hundred dollars. The Board of Education president and clerk salaries are one thousand six hundred dollars. Is there a motion on this?
Public can make a motion too, just so.
So moved. All right, do we have a second?
And that's to keep it at the current schedule.
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any comments regarding the Board of Education members', president, and clerk salaries?
So just to clarify, it's the same as it was last year?
That's, that, that is the determination here, and that's what's up for vote if we keep it the same or if we're looking at an increase for the board.
So we do have an opportunity to discuss a change, but right now the, the motion and the second is for, it's the status quo.
Yep. Yes.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Now look at reimbursement for district board members. Do we have a motion to direct the Board of Education to furnish school lunches?
Next one, sorry.
Oh, my logic.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Reimbursement of school board.
Motion to authorize the Board of Education to direct and provide prosecution. Oh, so we're skipping over. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped.
Yeah. So it's just a reapproving the reimbursement of expenses for board members.
Okay.
Pertaining to the business of the board, so.
And is this, is this essentially a status quo? Are there any, are there any annual changes to policy amounts?
Not, not that I'm aware of, but that's, that's the decision here for, for the group. If we're going to continue that reimbursement, or if we're gonna look at something different as far as the stipend.
I'll make a motion to continue the reimbursement.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
John and Brittany.
Any discussion about the reimbursement policy? All those in favor of maintaining the status quo?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. All right, school lunch program. We're looking for a motion to direct the Board of Education to furnish school lunches to pupils and appropriate funds for that purpose.
So moved.
Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Yes, you can.
You've got invested interest. All right, any, any discussion points? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Item E, student transportation exception. Motion to authorize the Board of Education to direct and provide for the prosecution or defense of any action?
We gotta do student transportation.
Yeah, that, that is the transportation. So the exception would be providing transportation for students within a two-mile radius.
Of, of the school location.
That's correct, because currently with, with rules, we would only offer transportation for students that are beyond that two-mile radius.
Oh, I see.
So what we're saying, if they're within that two-mile radius, we're still gonna provide that option.
Scoop them up on the way in?
That's it.
Yes.
And the, the main reasons for that was because we have the highways so close and the railroad tracks, because we don't want to encourage kids to have to.
Do I need to declare a conflict of interest on this item? Or can I continue to carry it out?
Continue to carry it out. It's all good.
Do we have a motion to approve the transportation exception?
I'll make the motion to.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Exception is for student transportation is approved. Item F, twenty twenty-four annual budget hearing and district meeting.
So I will say that is a type, it's supposed to be two thousand twenty-five annual budget meeting, our hearing and district meeting. And taking a look at the recommendation, the recommendation was the twenty-seventh of October, which is the fourth Monday of the month.
May I consider that a motion?
No, I cannot make that.
Oh, okay, would anyone like to so move that, that date?
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a date for the next meeting.
Well, next is the sale of school property and materials.
Okay, sale of school property materials. I do not have a detailed.
Right. Right now, yeah, there is no recommendation for sale of school property and materials. And when we're talking about school property and materials, it is referring to buildings, land, or non-movable items. When we're talking about equipment and vehicles and whatnot, that's considered personal. And we'll talk about that at a regular meeting, so recommendation is no movement on, on the sale of property and materials.
Do we have a motion regarding the, the policy as described?
Make a motion.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Just so.
Oh.
Me and Nate.
Second?
Sure, you can be first.
Okay.
Nate first.
Yep.
Nate's always first.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. All right, well, that wraps up our new business. There is nothing else remaining on the agenda, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you everyone.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Well done, Bob.
One person, you get a piece, one piece of candy.
Ooh, I better not. But thank you very much. Your approval means more than the candy.
Someone refresh it. All right, we're gonna give you the credit, so. All right, this brings us on to our regular school board meeting. Does anybody need a quick five-minute break before we move forward? Okay. All right. All right. So we'll call, we'll be calling this meeting to order. This is our October twenty-eighth Board of Education meeting. We'll call, John?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Brittany?
Here.
And myself here. All right, announcements. All right. Announcements, October twenty-eighth. Okay, our next meeting will be held November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That's, that's our regular board meeting. Just to highlight, the committee of the whole meeting is a, it's a long ways out, it's next week. So.
All right.
So it is on Monday?
It is on Monday.
So.
Yep. The four.
That's our committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole.
What's referenced there, November eighteenth is the next scheduled board meeting.
Regular scheduled board meeting.
On the calendar here, or is it doesn't exist? November fourth? Check.
Check.
So Brett, those are two that you would try to make.
Okay. Next would be approval of the meeting agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
John has made the motion to approve, you'll have a second for approving the agenda?
Second. I was just trying to be polite.
John and Ben?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, approval of meeting minutes.
I'll also make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Yep, these are for the October twenty-third meeting. So.
Second.
Second. Okay, John and Ben, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us on to our treasurer's report.
Right. I need one clarification, just because I need to make sure with, under total expenses, does that say minus four eighty-seven? Or is that just a? Am I supposed to read it like that?
It's, no, you can just say that the total expenses were four hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay. So our beginning balance is six hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Total receipts, sixty-five thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and forty-four cents. Our total expense, four hundred eighty-seven thousand, eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Thus, our ending balance as of September thirtieth was two hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents. Our local government pool, two million, eight hundred six thousand, six hundred twenty-two dollars, forty-eight cents.
Thank you for that treasurer's report, that will be filed for audit. Okay, that brings us on to student council. No student council this evening? This brings us on to committee as a whole, which we just discussed. That will be, this is from our past meeting on October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve the committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. John and Ben? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Eagle Wings Turner Academy update. All right.
Hello.
Come on up.
Nothing. We all were very excited and planning for having our annual meeting.
Oh, hold on.
Can I, can I ask you that?
Oh, sure.
Come on, please. Sorry.
No problem.
Otherwise, you're just this disembodied voice.
The voice.
Very, thank you.
We have worked a lot throughout the summer on updating a lot of things, going through the handbook and our bylaws. And then now on through this past month, we have been planning for our, the annual meeting, which was intended to be coming up. We had discussed earlier today through a few messages, we might delay that until maybe the first week of December, just because it's a lot of information to get together, and we were all very eager, but being realistic, we'll probably delay that a little bit, make sure we're all prepared next, next week when we all meet.
And, and we, we do have the meeting minutes attached here for review as well. I, I will just commend the, the governance board on the hard work that they've been doing, just really trying to reinvigorate the board and making sure that we're doing things, doing business the way we should be doing it. And it's been a lot of great discussions, a lot of great work, so I greatly appreciate of that, so.
So just a moment, excuse me, I don't, who are you? I don't.
Oh, my name is Jenny Rose.
Jenny Rose, okay.
So I'm a parent member on the governance board.
Okay, great, thank you.
Jenny, would you like a piece of candy?
I am good, but thank you very much.
All right, that brings us on to our athletic director's report, Mr. Olber.
All right, that's some good news. Yeah, we had some good news from last week. So just some updates to what I submitted in my board report from last week. So football had their playoff game on Friday, and they did defeat Hurley. So they advanced to the level-two playoffs for football. For, as I mentioned, there's only sixteen teams that make the eight-man bracket in football. So they're one of the last eight schools that are left, and they play Clayton Friday night at seven o'clock down at Northwood. And if they were to win, they'd be in the final four. I do not know where, I know we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but the, the state, what is essentially the state semifinal game would be at a neutral site. And I don't, I have not looked far enough ahead to know where that would be. But the state eight-man championship game would be at Wisconsin Rapids, so that would be two weeks out yet. So a good week for football, they played really well. Volleyball, they did win their first playoff game. That is mentioned, they did fall in their second playoff game to apprentice in straight sets. That was on Thursday night that they, they played. But cross-country, a couple of big things with them. So the, the boys won their second straight sectional title when we hosted sectionals at Hidden Greens on Saturday. It was even more comfortable than how they won the invite that we had a couple of weeks ago. They were pretty close with unity, it was a three-point victory, and I think we were clear by about sixteen points was, I think, the difference. And Penelope Burfield was actually a freshman runner that qualified for the state meet as well. We haven't had an individual female runner qualify in the last thirty years, so that was, she ran super well. And yeah, we're just super pumped that not only are we sending our, our boys team, which we felt pretty good about that, but having Penelope be able to hop in there and represent our girls' team is, is a great accomplishment for her, especially with her just being a freshman as well. So, so yeah, that was a, that was a nice Friday night into Saturday event for our fall sports. So the state meet is on Saturday in Wisconsin Rapids. I think Penelope runs at noon, girls run first this year, and then the boys, I would think, around two o'clock. So we are going to have a send-off for them at some point, likely on Thursday, considering that we don't have school on Friday. So I just need to touch base with our coaches and see what they're, what they're looking for, and we'll schedule a time. So that, more news to come there. Winter sports will be up and running here, middle school boys' basketball, we started back on October fifteenth. Girls' basketball will start on November eleventh, boys' basketball will be on the eighteenth. So we're transitioning between seasons already. I did get, word from Aaron Swanson at Merz, rookie, we made seven, sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars on the golf scramble this year, so that's a new record high for that event. So that is, that is awesome that we were able to generate that, those kind of funds. We'll be working on thank yous to go out in November to all of our donors. I did update, we've been putting the last couple of years, the, the donors for this event on the inside of our programs, so I've updated that to be able to print those off and have, when people come in for sporting events, those are listed inside of the programs. And then I will check with our winter sport coaches if there's anything that they need as far as funding requests from those dollars for the committee of the whole on.
Monday.
Already, so.
All right.
A follow-up on the WIA area meetings, that was back in September, but it wasn't in our September meeting. So there are just a couple of things that came up. Shot clock has been one of the things that has been talked about in the state of Wisconsin for the last number of years. Based on, on the information from that meeting, the earliest we would be in the place that we would vote on implementation would be April of twenty twenty-six. So that won't be happening this year to be and to put in, to play for the, you know, not this upcoming, but the following. So the earliest it could go into effect would be that twenty-six, twenty-seven year. I'm sure there will be a lot of people asking for it, and a lot of people at the same time saying, we don't need it, so.
Right, it, it was kind of interesting to see that data, the, the people that are really pushing for it are the very big schools.
Right.
They're really pushing for it. And, and the medium to smaller school districts are not, they're not in support of it, so just kind of interesting to see that.
Yeah, and I, I think there was a comment a couple of years ago, it was like, well, we need to prepare our kids to play college basketball. And I think if that was the way that they were trying to sell it, you probably lost a lot of people that were gonna support it, because I mean, we, there's just, and it's not anything about, you know, our school specifically, but like, there's just not that many kids that go on to play college basketball. So we're putting a rule in effect that affects the whole state for the couple that are gonna go on and play college basketball. I, I know that there is always some traction, especially with the coaches' association, as to if they want to be able to put it in, and they're concerned that kids are transferring out of state because of how basketball runs in Wisconsin, and they don't want to be a part of it, so. I guess more to come, so. There will be a proposed constitutional amendment in the April annual meeting, so that's in April twenty twenty-five. That an ejected spectator must take an NFHS sportsmanship course before attending, before attending the next home event. We passed a, a rule in our Northern Lights Conference that you would have to sit for three games, so that's a conference rule. So this would only, the only thing that I would add to it is that they'd have to take the NFHS sportsmanship course as well, so.
How often is this happening?
To my knowledge, in our conference, I don't know if it has happened very much. However, our boy, our football team played flambeau Friday before last. There was a woman that had been ejected at flambeau and showed up at Northwood. And she was told that she had to leave. She said, I don't have to leave. She actually got thrown in a squat and was taken away. So it, the, the problem is, is what we mentioned here is like, if you're going to sit for X amount of contests, like, it puts the onus on the away school to know what's going on too. And, and that makes it difficult because, you know, you can, I can send them a name and says, you know, whomever is, can't come, but they don't know who that is and they're not checking IDs at the door and, and those types of things. So it just, some of the times, how what happens at the other schools is kind of hard to dictate, so. And the reason that the woman from flambeau got essentially caught was that the other fan said, hey, you can't be here. And so it was her own community that said, you, you can't do this, because they knew that she shouldn't have been there, so.
Yeah, that, that gets, it gets challenging if you're, you're sending out a BOLO or beyond looking for this person.
Right.
You know, so.
Yeah. And with us being three games, you know, there's probably going to be an away game in there somewhere, so. There is another constitutional amendment for the, again, the April twenty twenty-five meeting to that student athletes may enter into name, image, and likeness opportunities for those activities not associated with their school team, their school, their conference, or WIA. This was something that was voted down at last year's annual meeting. And I think when people think of name, image, and likeness, they probably see what's at the college level where, you know, athletes have the opportunity to benefit. This would be really, really tiny opportunities for any of the kids. Any business that has already contact with our athletic programs, our school would not be able to enter into some name, image, and likeness agreement with any of our students. So essentially, you'd have to have a company from far away that has had no ties to any of our kids that would want to enter into agreement with them, so. I, I think, and I, I think why this is getting pushed forward is that if there's some boundaries, then we kind of know what the boundaries are. Right now, I think the concern is that there's going to be a lawsuit, maybe from someone saying, well, kids in other states can, why can't my kid in Wisconsin? And this would allow, at least for the WIA, to initiate what those boundaries are going to look like and then adjust if needed instead of maybe the state legislators, legislators saying, you have to implement this and this is what it's going to look like and then we just have to follow suit. So again, more to come, so. And we did have a resignation. Sarah Smith did resign as our girls' basketball coach. And so there's a, a coach that we interviewed last week and we have put forth, I think, for later on in the meeting, so.
That's correct.
That is all I have, so.
Any update on the banner?
Yes, the, the, I talked with a company in Cameron, because Mark and I really looked at the size in the gym and if we can customize that to slim them down a little bit, just to make it so that we could fit all of them on that west wall. He was supposed to give me proofs last week. I haven't seen them yet, so we're moving forward. As soon as we get some proofs and we can kind of see what they like. And, you know, we, we won some more titles and we might have to elongate some of, some of them might be a little bit longer because we're, you know, we're, we're getting to the point that we might run out of space pretty quickly on, on some of those. So as soon as we kind of get what that pattern is going to look like, you know, then we can move forward with that, so. And we also talked a little bit about with the FabLab stuff that we have here, doing some other things to recognize some of our other accomplishments instead of having to do the hardboard banners that we're looking at, so. All right.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. All right, that brings us on to expenditures. Do we, we got a little order there somehow?
Yeah, that's right. I was wondering that.
Yeah, because usually expenditures follow the treasury report.
Yeah.
Anyways, that's okay. Any questions on the expenditures for Lea?
Yes, just one. So I noticed we have a Netflix account? Actually, man, I don't know if it's you or Pete or whoever. Why do we have a Netflix account?
That's some of the educational movies and things that they, that they do. And then that is actually ran through the library, so there. If somebody's going to rent one for a classroom, maybe to, to match up with a movie that goes with the book that they've been reading, things like that, then they.
They're not watching Squid Games or nothing.
Not, no, not that we're aware of, and no, that's not.
That's a good one.
I mean, it's not a huge expense, but it's, it's just kind of pops out that we have an account.
Yep.
Okay, understandable. You're not the first person to bring that one up.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But it's good, it was a reading. All right, principals report.
Do, do we need to approve those?
Oh, do we need?
Yes, we do.
Sorry about that.
To move. Second.
Second. John and Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, expenditures pass. Ann, your turn.
All right, so first up, I have enrollment, just kind of update, like, just, you know, as mentioned before, just some minor shifts here and there. PLC team, so during our in-service on October fourteenth, CISA twelve came and did a lot of work with our staffing team to help look through our student data, how to create our student learning objectives. And so that also ties into how we can better instruct and just overall become a better teaching staff in general. So that was on a focus of groups of students in their areas of English language arts. So we're focusing on ELA this year and continuing the process with our team-level collaboration times for this month as well. Again, we're still in the process or the final stage of getting our middle school, high school teams finalized. Well, middle school is for the most part done, but it's just that high school, because we have so many teachers that have singletons and finding those, those collaboration groups with those individuals. Our SLOs will be finalized this upcoming Friday, November first. Our staff will have opportunity to finish those. And then just weekly ongoing collaboration around our ELA standards and our student data within our teaching staff. Our PBIS team, we have met a few times within the last month or so. We've been discussing how to support our district's three priorities, strengthening our communication, enhancing school climate, and fostering academic rigor. We've been, we began creating a behavior matrix for our staff, so it's classroom versus office managed. A scheduled monthly PBIS student and staff recognition assemblies. And those will highlight character traits of the month that we establish for each month. And then in addition, we're going to focus on providing materials and resources for PBIS instruction for our staff to implement with their, with their students throughout the months. The other part of that, those assemblies as well will recognize other areas as well, such as attendance, too. Just some upcoming events, so staff and service is Friday, quarter is ending as well this week. Unfortunately, due to some unforeseen issues, our school musical has been canceled for this year. Hopefully, we'll get that back on track for next year. We have our Veterans Day program for November eleventh, parent-teacher conferences later in November.
Can I ask you a quick question on the musical?
Yes.
I saw somewhere in the expenditures, we had a license that we, was that for something different or the same?
No, it was, we had sent, we sent in the money for the licensing for it and then they had some changes that came up after that. So she is working with them right now to get reimbursement.
Okay, because we're not doing a musical.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. One big thing that we finalized March eleventh will be our AC testing, ACT testing for juniors. And I don't know if we have that coming up later in terms of the attendance of the others, or.
Right, that, that, that'll be something that we'll bring up.
Okay, perfect. And then just some upcoming training and conferences. I have some workshops in Green Bay, Ashland. And then we will be doing our EAMS web assessment training for our staff that will meet those act twenty requirements and that will be this Friday as well.
I, I just feel like everybody must know this answer but me. The quarter ends October thirty-first and a trimester ends November twenty-second. Are we in trimesters?
There, there is an entity that operates in trimester, so.
One of ours.
I, I believe the Montessori operates in a trimester.
Thank you.
Which we're, we're, we're looking at to try to bring both our, all of our elementary entities into one.
Fair enough. No, I just was.
Yep, that's understandable.
Got it.
So on the enrollment chart, can we include maybe in the future how many were enrolling in, in each of those programs?
So you want open enrollment?
Enrolling in, and then just a raw number of enrolling out, because we're not going to necessar, I, I suppose we could know based on age, but we don't know if someone's enroll, enrolling out of the district from Montessori or elementary or traditional.
Right.
So that would be just a nu, I mean, we already kind of know that number, but I'm just curious what number enroll in from other districts into each of our programs.
And, okay, on, on a monthly basis or a one-time rule?
I think just a one-time, unless that fluctuates, I can't imagine it, maybe by one or two.
Right, what, what we can, we, what we can look at here is following our, our third Friday count in September, we can do that and that gives us a pretty decent number, but, but then, I mean, there are slight fluctuations, like I was saying earlier. Since that third Friday count, this year, we've already had, you know, multiple kids come back into the district in some fashion, so, anyway.
Yeah, just so we have an idea of how many people are enrolling into Montessori, into traditional, in the Eagles Academy or whatever.
Okay.
Is that everything Brit, or? Yeah? Sorry, yeah.
Yes.
Britney over there. Okay, Pete, on to your.
Right, all right. A second here, bringing this up. All righty, so first things first, just to, to reiterate, so last week, we had our safety drill, October safety drill. And the main focus of that was to have our older students focus on, on responding when they're in a more public area, such as the cafeteria, the IMC here, the gyms. And if they were to have a threat, how would they respond? So we established the, the four different areas and the groups that went into those areas initiated our drill and then we came back for discussion. And, and actually, it was, it was a, a very good practice for them and it was a good discussion afterwards. Realizing, you know, if, if you're in the cafeteria, where, where are your exits? And how can you respond to different things? In, in the, in the IMC, it was good because there were a number of students that didn't understand, oh yes, I can exit out this door, I can exit here, I can exit there. And there are certain doors that you can't go in or you can go into, but it's not going to get you anywhere. So it, it was kind of an eye-opener in that sense, so. We'll continue to build on some of these drills and, and looking at some of our more vulnerable areas, so. Anywho. Next one, just a, an update on the ad hoc maintenance committee. So we had our first meeting on October fourteenth, just to tour the facilities and identify some areas of concern. And that's both looking at the, at short-term issues that are, are pressing and then other things that are going to be coming up in the future here, so, in not-too-distance future. And it's just highlighting whether or not we should be considering a referendum in the future and, and providing that recommendation to the board as far as, you know, what, what is it that, that they see as pressing and providing that back to the board for review for sale.
Well, I think it'd be a good for the board to have the same opportunity, to tour the facility and I don't know if it's Mark pointing out, you know, this is whatever, whatever that entails.
Check. And, and, and I would say, I would encourage you to, to attend. Our next one is on November eleventh and everyone is welcome. The only caveat is if I have more than, or three or more board members present, I just need to know ahead of time so I can make sure that.
I'll take one for the team.
Not come.
So how long are, I mean, school's not that big, how long is this taking?
So I, I will say our first one, we went around just the facility here and we didn't get to everything. And it was about an hour and fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So.
As I say, if it was shortened early, we could do it, put it on the agenda for a regular board meeting, so we wouldn't have quorum issues or anything, but. I guess I didn't realize that it'd be that detailed or take that long.
Well, it's, it's, it's going in and identifying different areas, having the discussion there, you know, so it's, it's highlighting the good, bad, and ugly on what we're doing, so.
I mean, I'd like to know that without having to do an ad hoc thing, but.
That might be a thing to do at the Cal meetings, because when the policies groups or the groups used to meet for each of the, the groups, that would be something we would do. We would have a building committee, which is now.
No, I, I, right, I, I, I hear you, but then, on the other hand, I also want to be respectful of people's time as well. Because I'm, I'm trying to keep it to an hour. And if we have an hour dedicated to that and the rest of our committee of the whole, it just makes for a longer evening, so.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I'd be looking at that, so. And, and again, I'll encourage people to attend as well as board members, so. There?
There. No, that makes more sense, because then we have the opportunity to speak with the public, do the analysis for us.
Absolutely.
Perfect opportunity.
Okay.
All right. Strategic planning.
All right, so strategic planning, so Ann and I met with Kevin Strandberg to kind of wrap up our, our process. That focus is really how do we move forward with our new mission, vision, values, and priorities? And, and a, a, a big thing that we're looking at is establishing district goals to address the three priorities that were approved by the board. Was that September?
Yes.
Last month, right, all right. So really taking a look at those three priorities. And then that we're presenting those goals both as the initial and then also the follow-up at the end of the year, so. So we'll be looking, be looking for more of that here in the future. All right, moving on to the next one, middle school, high school programming. So based on, on that decision in July, is administration being, is being, or we're, we're considering options for additional middle school, high school program to offer more in-person options. And what I have listed are four different considerations to look forward to. First is that family and consumer education, which is more formerly, or formerly referred to as HOMEC. And that would be able to provide both exploratory for middle school and then also high school options. Math, science, and STEAM. Just knowing that currently where we're sitting right now, we have one math teacher for our middle school and one math teacher for our high school. And a lot of our math stuff is being doubled up to make sure that we're getting the extended courses as far as algebra, geometry, algebra two, pre-calc, and then calculus and whatnot. So looking at that potential where we could expand out with math, science, and STEAM and looking at other elective options. Another consideration is a foreign language that could be offered as the exploratory, which technically we should have an exploratory in foreign language in our middle school, which is our seven-eight, and then also a high school offering. And then the last one, as a consideration, could be an agricultural education option, which would provide an exploratory for our middle school as well as high school options. And some of those options would be, would count as science credits as well. So some different options that could be explored here, so. And taking a look at what we have for offerings, having more offerings for electives, exploratory, and then also our sciences are the big considerations that we have, so.
So is this consider, this is adding faculty?
This would be that reallocation of the FTE that we did not fill in July, so.
Well, we, I mean, we only have one of those, so how do we?
Well, that, that's, that's part of it, so. Well, that that's that's part of it, so it's a it's so uh part of where where our discussion is gonna go with the ad hoc. Maintenance Committee is looking at a spacing, where are we gonna put this, but then also getting some suggestions. If we have community members that are attending that, it's a prime opportunity to to survey them and get some different feedback and thoughts. Uh, that we can bring back here as well, so. Alright. Um, and then, uh just moving on to uh potential referendum considerations. So one thing that I wanna really hit on, two years ago, um there there was a movement to. Um, potentially go to referendum, there's surveys sent out to the community members, community members, uh to gauge. Whether or not this was a good idea. And and one thing that I I wanna make sure of is that I'm providing information to both the board and the community. As to what this could look like. So when we talk about referendum uh considerations, there are two different types of referendums that we can look at. First one being a capital referendum, so when we talk about capital referendum, we're talking about physical space and and maintenance uh of our facilities. So it's structure, right, something you can put your hands on. But the next one is operational referendum, and that's more that's geared towards just maintaining our operations. So the the referendum that was passed in two thousand sixteen was an operational referendum, alright? It's not putting anything to structure, anything that you can put your hands on, it is truly to uh uh go towards overhead. And salary and wages, so um as we as we start to consider stuff with the budget that we just. Uh, that was just passed, uh and and our levies, something to consider in the future if if we're gonna have to look at. Not just capital referendum where it's adding or taking care of uh our our current facilities. But do we have to look at an operational as well? Um, and and just knowing that when when you push towards referendum, you can ask two questions every year. So you could potentially have one for capital and one for operational, depending on where we're at. But just my 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 thoughts right now is just provide information, so when we, if this continues. People understand exactly what we're talking about, okay? So just wanted to prep prep this here, so. Okay?
Does everybody understand that?
Yep.
Just a preparation period.
Absolutely, and and a further consideration here as well, if if we were to push towards a a referendum. Uh, there are certain timeframes when you can actually do that. And and previously, uh, the school boards were able to establish those referendum elections. And it didn't necessarily have to fall on specific election days. That that changed, so now we we if we are to go to referendum and and put that on a ballot. It has to fall in line with actual election dates. So obviously, we're not doing anything right now, uh because i- in order to get it on the ballot. It has to be, uh, the board has to approve questions a- and and uh post them seventy days. After, you know, that that election has to be within that seventy-day window roughly, alright? So obviously, nothing for November. So taking a look at the future, the next one would be April, okay? And since it's two thousand twenty-five, there's no major elections in November. So the next one after that would be April of twenty-six, okay? So it's just making sure that we're aware of that piece. And then obviously, after April of twenty-six, you have November of twenty-six, and it starts into that pattern again, so anyway. Just more food for thought as we start prepping, okay? And that, that's all we have.
Alright, thank you.
That was your job, thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Alright, this brings us on to public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment this evening? Alright, thank you. Approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five district budget and tax levy. Which we have just reviewed in our prior meeting.
So we just have to pass it again?
Check, so so it was uh it it was passed in 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 the larger sense, but then. To actually put it into action.
In in emotion here, so.
Um, so I'll I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five district budget tax levy.
Do I have a second?
Sorry. Oh, did you wanna do it?
I was gonna.
Oh, no, okay.
Okay, I'll get her next time.
Alright, so, alright, John and Ben, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, personal recommendations, we have a personal recommendation of resignation of Sarah Smith from our girls' basketball coach. And a hiring recommendation of Ashley Nelson to replace her as the girls' basketball coach. This has been recommended by Mr. Nathan Alber. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brittany, go ahead, a second.
Second.
Alright, Brittany and Ben, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Congratulations to Ashley Nelson as our new coach. Alright, uh, a consideration of acceptance of the donation. That would be the donation of safety vests from the Sonovus Energy Organization. They contributed a number, Pete had reached out to me looking for safety vests, so when we have our safety drills, we actually have actual vests. I worked with um Linda Linda Cottage, our new communications director. Who worked through the process, and we managed to get a large number of safety vests for them, so.
I move we accept the safety, the safety vest, I move we accept the donation with great gratitude.
Second. You like the second?
I'll second.
Okay, John and Ben, any further discussion? Alright, motion passes to accept the safety vest. Alright, that brings us on to liquidation of a school vehicle.
Alright, um, so a- at the committee of the hall is a discussion on on how we would do this. And uh what I uh made sense here is to go back into our actual board policy. Uh, to reference exactly how this would take place. And and as I stated previously, the uh the board policy that pertains to this is, it it refers to it as personal property. Which the naming convention doesn't make sense because it's not personal, but it's. But that's where these items fall under as personal property. Uh, and and taking a look at it, um, uh with the disposition, what what it states here. Is authorized to dispose of obsolete instructional land or other property by selling it to the highest bidder. By donation or proper waste removal. So it clearly states the three different routes that we should take in it. Um, I know with with the said vans, um, we're not talking at very high value. Uh, for these items, but um based on this. Uh, unless unless the board sees differently and wants to do a donation here, uh we would put this out for bid.
So that's our two school vans, the older ones?
It it is, uh, the older ones, that is correct, so.
Okay, so the, just a question on the newer vehicles?
Yes.
Do we garage them, do we just leave them in the snowbank, or what?
We are working on that, there was a fair amount that uh of stuff that was relocated permanently. And um the the good and the bad with that is it opened up more space for uh the. Items that were in a classroom that has been transitioned to a different classroom, so we're we're still working on emptying out spaces, so.
I mean, I think it's important that we try, you know, try our best to do that, so we're not uh wasting away vehicles on the weather here, so.
I I I'm in firm agreement, I I will say that uh there were two large trailer loads that left our facility. We've got more to go, so.
Oh, so we haven't disposed of everything that we're that trying to sell or otherwise?
Right, that that's correct, so we had our first wave that went through and 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 we'll set up another wave here.
Okay, great.
How do you want me to state this motion for liquidation of the school vehicles, how do you want that phrased again?
Uh, actually, uh uh unless, I I guess it's looking at just how you want me to dispose of it. Do you want me to do bid, donation, or?
I think highest bid.
Highest bid.
Which is, you can still do just on a regular sale.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so, okay, is that fair?
You bet.
I think that's a good one. I can get a little setback for that van, hang, let somebody else use it.
Absolutely, so so what I would recommend is just that that motion that we would put that out to highest bid.
Okay.
And pass it in that sense, so.
Okay. So move.
Oh, okay.
Second. Yeah, you'll be quicker, man.
Alright, Ben and John, this is for putting up the vans, the older vans up for bid. Uh, any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, thank you guys. Alright, yeah, International Learning Trip, Italy and Greece, Jen Lathwaite, come on up.
Well, my daughter and I were part of the last overseas learning trip um two years ago when she was a senior. Um, Mr. Myers was the one that headed that up, he's no longer here, he talked to me about would I be interested in. You know, taking over that role of being the person to head up the next trip, and I thought about it, and I didn't know if there was really any interest in it. It, cause when my daughter and I went, there was one, only one other student, and then some staff members, but not a lot of students seemed interested in it. So I thought, well, I'm gonna see if there's interest first, I went around the last part of last year to all of the classes that would be eligible to go. That would be old enough, and you know, proposed either an Italy-Greece trip again, or a New Zealand-Australia trip. And overwhelmingly, most kids were um interested in Italy and Greece, and there was a lot of interest. Now, this is also coming from kids, so I said, you know, I gave them the papers, and I said, take it home and talk to your parents about this, and. And I had quite a few parents email me and say that they were definitely interested in it, so I thought, well, we might as well try to go forward with it. Um, and so I talked to Explorica, and they have given me um an itinerary. And a a tour fee that um it would be not this coming spring break, but the following spring break. March of twenty twenty-six. My thoughts is that we would be able to do quite a bit of fundraising between now and then to defer some of the cost. There's quite a few staff members that I've heard are interested in going also, so I don't know what kind of questions there are for me.
What was the cost per person?
Um, forty-one seventy-nine.
Okay.
And I had looked into like, what is what is airfare right now to Milan, Italy, and it was about eighteen hundred dollars. So then you're talking about only another twenty-one hun- it's a ten-day trip, so everything is covered, all the tickets, all your hotel. Most of your food.
Breakfast and a supper.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, breakfast and supper, lunches.
So to me, that sounded like actually, in this day and age, a pretty good deal.
A good deal.
It is.
And it was an amazing trip, I mean, amazing, everything was taken care of, you felt very safe. I mean, I I'd do it again, obviously, in a heartbeat, because it was, you know, very educational and. It was a very good time. Any questions for me?
No, this is not actually a school-funded trip, this is outside of the school, but we help run it through the school to allow students to get on. To get this opportunity to travel.
Yes, I don't know, and I think Lydia Lewis did it before Bruce Myers, and I think when she did it, she did a little more fundraising with the kids. Where Bruce, you know, just, I mean, families really, you know, just came up with the whole, and you can pay for it monthly. Or you can pay for it all at one time.
So the the uh the approval that we'd be looking at here is. Uh, that you would support uh this trip, but then also okaying that uh excused absence. Because it impacts a few days of school as well.
A couple days.
Are you planning on doing fundraising right here in the school?
Uh, I think a little bit of both, I know that that um right now, the Christmas tree sales, they're looking for someone to take that over.
Somebody took that.
Oh, they did, okay.
Okay, so, well, and also be able to be able to fundraise within the school.
Right.
That that's it, yeah, absolutely. Also that too, because I know we have policy on that one. Right, so.
And in the mass, if, so, and I don't know if you would do it the same way, that that the kids that were worked in event. Then they would get a portion of the proceeds that were taken, but if they decided not to go on the trip, they didn't get.
They didn't get. That's right.
Nick, my only comment to the administration is, I I'm, I love this, I'm for it, and I'll vote for it. I, I think our district has a fundraising problem. We overdo it, and I think my, what I would expect from the administration then is you curtail some other fundraising stuff. Ten students, that's forty grand that we're gonna try to be pulling in from the district.
Right.
So.
And and that, right, no, I I I hear I hear exactly what you're saying, and and that's was something I considered, but I I think we can take a look at ways of. Of doing that fundraising, that isn't it isn't specifically targeting the district, but it worked well, so.
But I don't think we can unless you're gonna go get money from Northwood people.
Right.
Like it, there's only so many fish in the in the pond.
No, right, right.
So there's a lot of subtle pressure on our students to go make money for programs. And my, I'm gonna say, I wanna see pro act like, so what's the plan? To to stop some of the other fundraising, to put it, and replace it with us.
Right, no, makes sense, makes sense.
Do you have a general sense of how much um the fund rate, you know, how much fundraising versus how much private contribution? Is that just?
I have, I have no idea.
No idea.
There have been some kids that have fundraised in the past, there were some kids that fundraised their total amount, and there were some kids that fundraised very little.
Yeah.
When my daughter and I went, we didn't do any fundraising.
You just.
Yep, we paid the.
Wrote a check and, yeah.
There was, there was a donation made to my daughter from through Mr. Myers, um, someone that had made some extra money during COVID. And wanted it to to go to someone, so, that, you know, but we didn't actively fundraise for the trip when we went the last.
You do wanna be careful telling somebody else you can't fundraise now for your group, because they're fundraising for theirs.
I disagree with that, totally, I think that's our job, is to ask hard questions rather than sending. We put these adults in positions of authority, and then they demand these kids go out and make money for athletic programs. When they don't really need the money, but they know they can do it, so they can, and it's just, it's a really awkward use of power.
And I don't, I don't necessarily even, like, I wasn't even going to do the fundraising, I was just trying to make it more of. Because this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for some, a lot of kids, and I just wanted it to be feasible for the kids. And I thought, well, if we did some fundraising to offset it, maybe it would be more feasible for some of these kids that otherwise wouldn't be able to go, so.
I I, and it's legit, it's worth it, I'm just saying we. One of the larger things that I think we have to look at as a district is this awkward. Just the way we use our students and um, you're right, I think, is this more important than some of the other? Applications of fundraising money?
I think what we can do here is we can can Jenna her motion to move forward with her plan here, because this is not till twenty twenty-six. I mean, this is over here, out.
Right, but she would maybe wanna start fundraising now.
But but we would need to review our, how we're gonna deal with our fundraising then, should be brought up and put on an agenda for another meeting, so. As I do understand what you're saying.
Well, we, the way we've left it is administration is the filter on fundraising.
Yes.
And I I don't mean, I'm not saying we have to change that, I'm just.
But 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 I I think what what Keith is getting at here, if if we wanna look at different ways of trying to fund this. We can have, bring that in here and just discuss that piece and have a little more information, because I I think we're we're talking about fundraising. But really, we're just looking at, do we support it or not, and then we can, you know, come back to that.
To the fundraising.
So, so are we supporting?
Cause I would like to have a informational meeting for families as soon as possible.
I think you're dodging, I think you're dancing around the issue.
Well, I I I, no, I I appreciate what what you're saying, but I don't think we were necessarily prepared to talk about fundraising at this point in time. But if that is that, if that is something that the board wants to do, we can certainly bring that back and have a more.
Structured discussion on fundraising.
And then we would have some ideas, because right now, to talk about fundraising when we haven't necessarily, when the board hasn't passed to support it. I mean, it's putting the cart before the horse in. I mean, it's putting the cart before the horse in some sense. I, I'm not trying to discount where you're coming from, but I, but do we support it or not? And then we can move on to what does the fundraising look like and make sure that it's structured and we're not, um, overburdening our, our, our tax base and, and our, our district. Yeah, so that's, that's my thoughts, but it's the board's, uh, decision on this, so.
Yeah, I think it would be good, we give you your support, but we do have to, we, it would be a good idea to review this, cause you're right. You know, we don't wanna be feeling like people need to be pushed or forced to, kid, or students to be pushed or forced to say they have to back or support or go out and fundraise for every organization. Cause I know what you mean. My kids were always bringing home things and it did get to a point where it's like, we're not gonna go door to door. We're just gonna hit our family in that case.
Yeah, but the, you know, and this type of thing is, I mean, they directly benefit from whatever fundraising they do. It's not just.
Yeah, it's not just to that sport. This is gonna help with individual kids get to something.
Right. But by coming back to it, um, what, what is a fundraising plan that will fit within the structure of what we have, so? And then I, I respect that thought.
Our fundraising, cause I know we passed a fundraising.
Right.
How that works up here. So, cause I know in the past, we had an issue one time where we had, somebody was doing fundraising, selling hot dogs and they thought it was for the team to go to an event and it turned out just for that player. And everybody's like, wait a minute here, that was quite a few years back. And that kinda like upset some people where like, then we started bringing them. So we have to be clear and concise on what we're fundraising for and when we're gonna have that and allow that. So like you say, we allow people to choose, you know.
I, I think if, if it, if it's okay with the board, I would recommend like a December or January where, where we present all our fundraising ideas for this. Cause we need to be very clear as to what, what our plan is.
But do we wanna at least green light this, that, tonight?
Right.
To say that she can move forward with getting things in motion for her trip, cause like I said, she wants to have a meeting with parents. Have parents understand this is the cost, this is the time. If we're gonna, if your kid's gonna do fundraising, this is how the funds would go in there. Cause I've been to these meetings in the past where it's like, yeah, if you fundraise, your kid will get this, tapped onto their balance to drive it down. So when I write the check, they're not writing a check for us for, you know. It was, I know we did this for, I think, banned to go to every year down to the thing down in Disney. You know, we could either just write a check or we could help fundraise. You know, no, no child was forced to say, you all must fundraise, you know.
Yeah, and the other piece of that too is just getting things lined up with the company before we don't have that opportunity and that slips away. So it's get, getting this kind of set and then we can come back to exactly what this looks like, so that's okay.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the, uh, trip plan.
John and Brittany, all right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Jen, for stepping up and doing this.
Thank you.
I know this really helps a lot of kids out. I know in the past, they're having comments made, this sometimes is the only real trip these kids get to take in, in, in their entire school year, you know.
For entire life.
Or entire life, yes. I think, Leanne, you talked about the one.
Yeah.
Taking kids to, I can't remember where it was, you and your husband.
Well, when, we went to that trip, we've gone to DC, we've gone to Disney.
Yeah.
Some amazing experiences and it also, there's many kids like my daughters that now they want to go out and explore more of these things because they've been exposed to.
Yes. All right, we're on to policy updates. You did over these, these are the second readings?
That is correct. So it's second reading for, for these updates.
You're in over these in our meeting of the whole?
I'm comfortable passing these.
Yes.
Without discuss, I mean, so.
Make a motion.
I move, we approve the policy updates. Volume thirty-three, number two, group two.
Okay.
Brittany, here's your opportunity to be, be the pawn.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? That would be Ben and Brittany. Any further discussion on this motion about the policies? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. Okay, walking the hall. Okay, this is.
You'd really need to add this.
Trying to.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is just, uh, an idea. We, we didn't pass one way or the other, um, as far as what this would look like. This is just a proposal, uh, that, uh, we can consider and I can bring back to November as far as, uh, looking over discussion and whatnot. But just making sure that, uh, I have it correctly, that we're not going to have hallway walking during the regular school day. And that, that would be at a minimum that I would ask for, you know, uh, approval on. And that we would carve out time ahead of the school day and be after the school day for said activities.
For hallway and the, as you guys are saying, um, the walking, but.
Right.
So the weight room in the past, we had, um, they had to have training on how to use equipment, right Linda? Ahead of time, so we should have that on.
Right, it is on there, so. Yes.
Who provides that?
And that's where we'd have a staff member that would provide it. We'd have to make sure that we provide times. If someone requests that, that we would arrange a time for that to happen, so.
And then I can't remember, did we, we talked about whether we'll have some staff member here during those times or not?
There, there would be people in the building, so.
A lot of the times you have your janitorial staff that is early in the evening and you also, in the morning, we have janitorial staff that is here early.
No.
Okay. Oh, we don't have them early anymore?
No. And in the past, we had people could come in with, come in on the weekend too, right? And use it, so we did not always have staff present. They just had to have authorization to use the fob and the fobs were set for certain times. And sometimes when we had it that evening, if there was an in-service during the day, sometimes the janitor or if we didn't have school that day, the janitors have worked during the day. So there wasn't somewhere in here in that evening to oversee them, so.
So anyway, didn't wanna get too much in, into the weeds on this, but it was, hey, you know, some things to look at for future, but the, the main thing I was looking at was the, during the school day.
Yeah.
And so we'll, we'll be bringing this more up, but just kinda give a, a forethought of what, what I'm thinking. And yes, this version doesn't have what you're talking about, but yes, I added it in, so, anyway.
Okay. A little further discussion. Okay, Eagle Wings Charter School Handbook.
All right.
Uh, so with that, um, as we talked about, it's just that update of the names into that previously approved document. Uh, added in, um, I believe I added in Brittany, uh, the only thing that was, correction, I did not. The only thing that, uh, we really have to take a look at is a, uh, a school board representative and that is one last thing that would have to be updated with this and brought to, um, brought to the governance board as far as who's gonna be that representative. So I have it on here as, as far as the handbook, but what I'm referencing is representation. And that also reminds me that we did not go without a clerk for.
I was looking at that too.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
So we're looking for a volunteer?
Uh, in, in, uh, what I would say is in good practice, uh, the school board would have a representative on the governance board.
And then attend governance board meeting?
That is correct, that is correct. Uh, and the governance board has been so gracious to, uh, keep their meetings aligned with regular meetings. So their, their meeting occurs at four-thirty on the Monday when we have our committee of the whole. So, so it's one long time and we're done, so. It's a great time. I get there, I enjoy the meeting, it's great, come here, see you guys, it's awesome, so, anyway.
I'd be candid, if you have two meetings a month, I'll tap out.
I hear it, I hear it.
I'll do it.
Bradford's not here, please.
Yeah, that's a, wow, yeah, that's another issue. Not here.
Bradford's called away.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll be the rep with nobody else.
Okay, all right, so then I can make that update, so.
Do we need to make a motion for matters?
Um, no, uh, not necessarily a motion on it. It's just making sure we make that determination.
Okay.
Of who's gonna do represent.
And those are generally at four-thirty?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Before a regular school board meeting.
And they are online.
They met today.
No, it can be the whole.
At the middle of the hall.
Okay.
And they are online too.
Absolutely. Which then kind of leads, in, in some ways, it's, it's not all bad, cause then that turnaround from, from the governance board to, uh, the regular board, if there's anything that needs to be passed, we have some timeframe to put on that agenda. But they can still talk about things here at the committee of the whole, so.
Do some people meet online?
Yes.
All of them or just?
No, not all of them.
But that, that is.
There are some.
Yes.
Jolie Little would be one I know would meet, meet be online.
Okay.
So, so I'm sure if you wanna do that, you could.
Yeah. I gotta be here.
All right.
Okay.
That brings us on to bus storage.
Uh, Roger that. So the bus storage location, as part of that discussion, is having a bus stowed off-site in case of an emergency as well as freeing up space within our, uh, current facility for making repairs on, whether it's school vans or a bus or whatnot. Because right now, the repair area is occupied, uh, with storing our actual buses. And the recommendation would be having that, uh, at, um, uh, Mr. Dahlberg's residence, cause then he would be up to get, or maintaining that bus, making sure that it gets, uh, used every so often. Because a, a vehicle that's not used tends to depreciate and, and.
So just to clarify, we don't wanna let one of our current drivers just park their, the bus at their.
That's.
It's sort of an extra bus.
It, it is.
Yeah.
It's an extra bus, so.
Well, but if the driver parks their regular bus at their home, then we, we've accomplished the same thing, right?
So that is an option, i- if the board so choose to go that direction.
How much are we gonna pay to store this off-site?
We are not.
We are not.
And where is it gonna be stored?
That Mr. Driver's.
He lives right on, on a.
Field in the back forty and that big tent garage thing or, I mean, if it's gonna be outdoors, we could park it outdoors here.
Well, what this, if you remember what this is looking at, there was some kind of emergency and we could not access the bus garage. Let's say we had a pipeline leak and we needed to use a bus. Maybe the Douglas County Emergency Center came to us and said, hey, we need a bus. We got elderly down at, you know, departments down here. Could we use, could we get a bus down there and help get these people out of town? Cause we feel that they shouldn't be around. We can't access the garage if the leak is right along here. So we would need to have, having his, him keep his bus there, then we could say, all right, Mark, can you fire it up? Can you go down there, do our good community service, get these people out of, out of danger? Or maybe it's, you know, somewhere else. So, or maybe we, we are taking the students out and we're taking them down the road and say, we need a bus to get them on and we're gonna drop all off at home, cause maybe like say a gas leak or something happens here and we wanna evacuate the school and everybody just walk out and start walking into a safe, safe location, so.
Yeah, that, that was, that was.
That's just a couple scenarios.
So it was, it was two different things here. A, we need to, to clear out space for repairs. So yes, we could just park the bus outside here, no big deal. But it, but it was more of asking that permission to park it off-site in case there was a, a situation where not, where we're not able to access our bus. We have to evacuate quickly, we're not able to access it, but we still need to have some mode of transportation. And that, that's the only reason why we'd be looking at this, so. And currently, we do not have that practice or policy in place, so.
So is Mark willing to be that person if we?
He is, he is.
That has happened in the past, not for a long time. He and Dave Hankins will have, have spare buses at their locations, so then if.
I'm, I would like to include in this approval, the opportunity for, and I, for drivers to park the bus at their house. And so whether you wanna, which, which somehow that's probably Mark approving, I mean, just authorizing, we don't like, if he thinks it makes sense, make it happen.
Sure. Uh, would, would, would you or the board be opposed to coming up with a, uh, just a rough plan of what that could look like? Cause I, I think I, I would, I would like to have something to, for you to consider if we go down that road.
So the buses we use for active routes are garaged here.
That's great. Yes, that's correct.
I mean, that, yeah, again, I'm.
Our day-to-day buses on our drivers.
But it just makes things last a lot longer if someone just parks at their driveway.
And that way, if somebody has, needs a sub that day, that.
Right, you don't have to go to.
Is here.
Right.
That they don't have to.
That's one of the reasons also why this peer school district got away from that. Now all their drivers have to report to one area. The buses are maintained, looked over on a regular basis, fueled on a regular basis. They are.
Right.
In our garage, sitting there, ready. Cause if something were to happen to the bus on the drivers, they could be possibly held liable.
Yeah.
Say if somebody broke into the bus and got hurt, some kids, some adult, then there could be a liability. At least if it's parked, Mark is our authorized maintenance person and our maintenance manager for these things. You know, he would still be able to maintain and make sure that bus gets driven on a regular basis.
Yeah, well, it's probably something we need to check with our insurance company to make sure we're not violating anything by garaging it somewhere off school property. That, that'd be one of my concerns by doing that.
That's very valid.
So if that's not an issue, I guess I don't have a problem.
Right, I, I, I think where, where it goes across is if we look at expanding that out to all drivers, that's where we're.
That's where we'd have, I think we'd be more.
Issues, yeah.
Right, so.
Well, other districts do it. So I wanna be careful about just, so that, other, the other district's not far away to it.
Right.
Well, maybe we could kind of take a look at what our drivers, maybe they're fine with coming here. I, I don't know.
I, I guess, my, my recommendation is if, if we can look at the consideration, at least for the one bus right now.
Yeah.
And then, uh, dive into, you know, you know, drivers, you know, having that bus back and forth and come back.
And I'm not sure if Yon continues to do that, cause I don't, I knew someone who drove a bus from Yon. I believe they, they garage all their buses now. They have to report there and then take.
Yeah, I know, I was referring to, uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's public meetings, I was gonna, net drop names, but yeah.
Fair.
Yeah.
If. So the, that's my recommendation. If we, if we want to look at that, I would, I would strongly recommend bringing it back at a later time when we have a little more information to provide, uh, recommendations for that, so.
So but now for this one.
Just the one bus at this time.
Okay.
Well, with the caveat that it doesn't violate any of our provisions in our insurance, um, then I'd be, I'd make the motion to approve it. I, I, I don't know, we have to clear that hurdle or?
Uh, you, you can make that, make that, uh, uh, motion or approval contingent upon insurance.
Yeah.
And then if there are issues with insurance, we can bring that back.
Bring that back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve it contingent on, um, not violating the provisions of our insurance policy.
Sounds good.
Second?
All right, John and Ben, first and second, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Snowbed, removal of snow.
All right. Uh, so in the executive contact, content, you have three different, uh, proposals received. Uh, and this is for both the twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six school years.
So can we just refer to them as proposal one, two and three?
That is correct.
Okay.
So in order as you see them.
Yeah.
On that.
That's right, we can't name these outlawed, maybe.
Uh, not at this time.
To, to clarify, are they? One of them is estimated per, per, per occasion and are the other two per hour? The middle one is, I'm not sure I read that one.
Right, so, um, uh, number three is definitely per hour and as you see listed on the proposal. And the, and the estimated timeframe that it would take.
Yeah.
Per removal.
And number, number one is just a flat rate?
That is correct.
Per?
Per time.
I guess the only thing on that is it, you know, cause two is very involved with like, well, if there's two inches of snow and blah, 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 blah.
Right.
I, so I, do we call it in and say we need you to plow?
I think Mark. I think Mark would be.
Mark would be the one making those determinations.
Reviewing that and would be contacting or working with them on it, so.
Okay.
That's, that's number one there, so.
The second one is the one that we've had the last few years.
Well, I can tell you, having read that, there's no way I would vote to approve number two. That we're supposed to indemnify number two for any damages, injury, whatever. I don't, I don't agree with that. So, I don't know if we wanna, if anybody else has a feeling on it one way or another.
So, that would mean if, so if I'm reading, that what they're asking is, hey, we smashed somebody's car.
We run over your front sign with our plow.
We're not responsible.
The district's responsible for it.
Yeah, I don't think most, most contractors carry some kind of insurance if they accept.
And, and they do mention that, but the, indemnifying means, whatever, whatever what happens, the district's responsible for any damage.
That's right. Okay. And this would be just. Location, okay. So, do we wanna make a vote on this tonight? I think we should, because we, snow could be tomorrow.
Sounds like Halloween, we're supposed to get a little.
Yeah, possibly.
Well, I, I do like the flat rate.
Yes.
Um, we know what we're getting, um, if, if it's, I, I don't know, is Mark calling it in and we need to plow or?
So, Mark generally just handles our sidewalks and stuff, right? He just, he's got that.
The doors and, yeah.
The doors, the sidewalks, it'd be just the main parking lot areas.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, so.
Did Mark have a recommendation or preference?
Uh, he did not.
Oh, bother, that would've been helpful.
Um, uh, in, in all ethical sense, I would say it's probably, unless there was something off-putting with one or the other, he would say something in that sense. But providing a recommendation, I don't think that's, yeah, great on his part, so. Cause that's recommending a specific business, so, anyway.
Entertain motions or just keep discussing or?
I'm certainly willing to follow someone else's wisdom here.
My, my personal opinion is number three, I just like the flat rate, it's there, it's not.
One was the flat rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, number one was the flat rate, I, I like that one, because like I say, it's a flat rate, we get to look at two, like you had pointed out, John, but then there's all these other things, if I gotta bring in a front-end loader, if I gotta do this, they want one-hour travel time, paid upfront for minimum for coming here, you're adding a lot of, if I gotta bring a skid loader, I'm gonna charge you more if I gotta add this, if I gotta add that.
If it's two inches, I mean, that's, here, that's really not necessarily that big a deal, but.
Well, and two inches is a common, usually two to four inches, people I know who snowplows, like a two to four inch, you give them a call or they automatically show up, so.
So, so, yeah, I, I would make a motion to accept the very first bid. Thoughts or?
Well, let me have the other one, let's see, snowplowing per hour.
Once a motion's been, you can.
Trying to open up the skyward to see what kind of hours we've been looking at last year too.
So, right now, we have a motion on the floor. I was still waiting a second.
Okay, motion on the floor for John, saying one. Do I have a second?
I second one.
Okay, Brittany, all right, thank you, so, motion on the floor is that we accept bid one, as we called it, the per flat bid rate, my understanding, okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, so you were, were you reaching out to them?
We would be.
Okay, just interrupt with your second.
We would be, uh, in contact with them, so.
Okay.
I'm approving.
And then everything that was, we need to bring up above the secretary.
What's that?
Clerk.
Uh, yes, there, there should be a, a determination as far as the clerk.
Well, first we have to, are we all in favor that we, this was not added to the agenda, that we need to pick a new clerk tonight, so.
Do you need that in the motion? Or is that what you're saying?
Yes, we are going to, that we are all okay by breaking the agenda by allowing to elect a new clerk?
Yes, so.
I'll second it.
Okay, you second it? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes that we have broken the agenda to elect a new clerk, which we should've done much earlier. Do I have any interest or nominations?
I'll make a nomination for Brittany to be the new clerk.
Who would like to second that motion?
I will, yeah, woo!
All right, so, all in favor? Or any further discussion?
And, I accept, she accepts.
Oh, do you accept?
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't wanna force this on, so.
Um, I guess I just, what's the, what's the role?
Uh, the clerk kind of, uh, the clerk's like, well, it's to sign things, but also like when we have the election, she would come up here and help validate the ballots on school board members, stuff like that, and it's just coming up and I believe the county sends the ba, you know, ballot count, you go up, yes, I agree with the ballot count. And then you would sign that, agree to that and.
Sign off on a lot of the forms.
On, on, on a typical year, uh, since you would, you would be a part of that election process, you would not be able to certify, you know? So, that's, that's where it gets kinda rocky, but typically, yes, you would be, um, signing off on a number of different things and we would work together on that piece. And then the, obviously, the election stuff, so.
Election stuff.
That's correct.
Yeah, I believe it's all, diplomas?
Um, yeah, there, there's, there's a number of, um, things that you would sign off on as, as acting clerk, but then.
And then like in April, we could rearrange the board and someone else could step in as clerk when that time comes, so. All right, so you accept.
So, like, tonight you would sign the tax levies.
Yeah.
Oh, everybody's praying.
Can you make more money?
Yeah, all right, Brittany has accepted.
Right.
All in favor of Brittany being your new clerk?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes, congratulations, Brittany.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us then to closed session, there is no item for closed session this evening. Do I have a action for adjournment?
So, move.
Second?
All right, Ben and John?
I'd sit on a Bradford, he's always fast.
Yeah, he's always fast on that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're closed, we are now closed, the time is, uh, eight P M.
Good job, people.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Bob, way to endure.
Hey.
Yeah, good job.
Once I, once I got here, it's like, yeah, you gotta stick in.
So, what was your, you said conflict of interest, what's your conflict of interest?